Okay, thank you everyone. Welcome to the Springfield Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, January nineteenth. Bill, if you would, why don't you talk about us being remote and then we'll do the roll call?
Yeah, just, just quickly, just for those who may be here for the first time as well as people watching, due to the Zoom requirements of these meetings, the planning board is, is holding two hearings for each item. The new items tonight will be heard by the planning board and presented by the petitioners. You'll be able, the board will then be able to ask questions. At the end though, the board will not vote on it. They will continue the item. This meeting will then be aired on Focus Springfield TV tomorrow and, and it will allow the general public to view the meeting. And if there are comments, the general public will be able to submit those either through voicemail or email for the following meeting. If we receive comments, those comments will be right into the record. And then that item would be voted on at that night, that, that next meeting. So it does take a little longer, but again, because of these Zoom meetings, that's, that's how we've been doing these for the past, boy, probably almost two years now, a year and a half anyway, so. On that note, I'll call the roll. Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Minio?
Here.
Mr. Daniele? Absent. Ms. Moran?
Here.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Here.
Mr. Florian?
Here.
McQuaid?
Here.
Ms. Choi?
Here.
We do have a call.
Okay, you want to talk about the?
I didn't know. I think I sent you guys minutes.
Oh, yes, that's right.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll second.
Okay.
Voting in favor to accept the minutes, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele? Oh, absent, sorry. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Flor?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Okay, just quickly, for those who may be watching for these items, I just wanted, there, I have three items under the public hearings continued. A zone change number three, two, two, five for seven ninety-seven Berkshire Avenue. This has been on the agenda for a number of, of weeks now, or probably going on months, but I have been in contact with the petitioner. He has completed the plan he's been working on and that was submitted to the Conservation Commission. However, the Conservation Commission meeting is not going to be until the twenty-fifth. So he was, he wanted to hold off on moving forward with this until the Conservation Commission could review that plan and, and hopefully ultimately approve it. So I would just ask this item be continued until the, I think it's the February second hearing at this point.
Do I hear a motion? Motion to continue zone change number three, two, two, five.
I'll second.
Thank you.
So voting to continue, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
This, this zone change will be continued. The next item is for zone change three, two, two, seven for nine fourteen Boston Road. The petitioner again has requested, they, they'd met with the Department of Public Works, but they're, they, they have not an opportunity to, to do the plans yet. So instead of moving forward, he was, he was hoping to continue this until the February second hearing. And at that point, he's hoping to be able to have plans ready to go, so.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Second.
Voting to continue, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Finally, under the subdivision plans for subdivision plan for Veterans Way. Again, I received an email yesterday from the engineer. They are continuing to work with the Department of Public Works to work out some of the kinks in the plans. So he is requesting that this be continued until the February meeting as well. I could just get a motion to continue.
We have a motion for Marty, but someone second?
Second.
For voting to continue Veterans Way, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
That will be continued as well. So moving back to the top of the agenda, under public hearings continued, to liquor license for all alcoholic liquor license new. Two ninety-six Cooley Street, the petitioner is Assad and Paul LLC doing business as AMO Hookah Lounge. Just so the board is aware, I think I sent this out to everybody. I did receive a, a letter from the Outer Belt Civic Association dated January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. They, they did take a vote and it was an eleven oh in favor of supporting the new, the new business and they, they did discuss that the, that the hours would be until two AM as well, so.
Okay. Do any of the board members have any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the hearing. Second.
Voting to close the hearing, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Just on a note before the motion is, you know, the, just under the conditions will need to be amended because I have twelve AM, so whoever making the motion? If it, so chooses to, so.
I'll make a motion to approve with the following condition. The hours of operation shall be Monday through Sunday, twelve PM to two AM. And there shall be no banners, streamers, or pennants located on the exterior of the building.
Second.
So voting in favor of the liquor license at two ninety-six Cooley Street, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Back to the next item under public hearings continued is for a site plan review for one forty-five Performance Boulevard. The expansion of existing warehouse operation and expanded parking, the petition of green leaf construction. Just so the board is aware, I have not received any additional comments either for or against the proposal.
Do I hear any other concerns or any concerns, excuse me, or questions from the board? Hearing none, I will accept a motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the hearing. A second.
On closing the hearing, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio? Mr. Minio?
You're on mute, Luca.
Apologies, yes.
Mr. Daniele? Absent. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
And again, on the motion, if it's so approved, I, I, I don't believe we need to read all the conditions and reasons. Those, those will be added to the formal approval letter that I send out. So the motion could just be with approval with conditions if that's the will of the board.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the conditions as stated in the agenda analysis. Second.
So voting to approve the site plan review for one forty-five Performance Boulevard, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Motion's approved. I will send out the approval letter. Contact tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the public hearings new. Under that is a liquor license. It's a all alcoholic liquor license new. The location is four twenty-seven White Street. The petitioner is Tucasa Restaurant Inc. doing business as Tucasa Restaurant Bakery Bar.
Would the petitioner please state their name and address and tell us a little bit about your business or your, and your request?
You just need to unmute. Oh, there you go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We would like to, to make a presentation if you allow us to share the screen with you.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Again, if I could just get your name and addresses for the record?
Yes, is the name of the company is Tucasa Restaurant Inc. is Tucasa Restaurant Bakery and Bar. And the owner and manager is my mother, Lotus Jimenez. She's, he's here next to me. Hold on. Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna put this on the side. Okay. This is our, our address. We're located at four twenty-seven White Street in Springfield in, in this specific area of Forest Park and the Sica is zero one one zero eight. About us, we're a family orientated restaurant offering traditional and Spanish cuisine to delicious, tough tire creative, creative dishes with joyful entertainments such as wild dinner, dining. Our vision is to operate a professional company and restaurant, provide exceptional dining experience for our customers to serve in the Springfield community and become a dining attraction in, in the whole area of Springfield. We want to operate with a professional environment and create more jobs in the area. We're planning to open twenty-four new positions as soon as we get open. Our restaurant environment will provide clean sanitary restaurant and implement local COVID guidelines as the, at the, the state of Massachusetts requires at this moment. We have certifier establishment. The manager has the certifier and we're requiring for the new employees to, to do the course. So everybody can have the same certification to, to work with us. Also, we want to have a professional employees that have this certification and have the, the professional knowledge to serve fresh dishes and offering the trainings, such as music, television, occasional live live music, so karaoke. Our staff will plan to have professional hardworking employees, certified tips, certified friendly and aware handsome owner. The owners will be their trustworthy, reliable manager, one assistant manager, two executive chef, two cooks, two dishwashers, one hostess, one busboy, two waitresses, four fridge tip, two bartenders, two servers, one baker, one agility, two delivery and one security. We are focused in serving to the Springfield area and surrounding community. The food can be offered as taking out dining. We will have a great variety on our, on our steam table and fresh ala parmenium, delicious desserts stationed à la carte menu and catering services. We do not discriminate and all customer will be treated equally and fairly. We accept all who comes to eat and drink and enjoy the experience. Does our security plan is to have stereo lighting lights up the outside of the establishment in parking. Lot of help to contribute to the outside street lighting to keep customers safe during the sundown hours. Get camera system located in both inside and outside the building and the survey activities requiring turn and communication among employees to help to keep the environment and the customer safe, especially to assure that here there's no serving of alcoholic drinks. All the employees who serve and preparing and serving alcoholic beverage will be tip certified and we check the identification to verify the age before serving alcoholic beverage and follow all the Massachusetts things, safety requirements. Customers will have access to, to park in the parking lot on the side of the building. Ocean on the street parking is available in the, in the front of the building. Monday through our operation hours will be Monday through Wednesday from nine AM to eleven PM or Thursday to nine AM to eleven PM. And we're applying to probably extend a little bit more until two PM. What, oh, what the board approves to us. But our weekend schedule, we're planning to extend it until two PM. It's not in the presentation, but while we were, that's what we're planning. The waste manager, we will waste, we use waste dumpster provided by a private company. In addition, we rent two waste dumpster from the city of Springfield, one for recycling and another for regular trash. The business owner will dump the waste on daily basis and inspect the trash location to ensure that no overgrowth of trash and ensure that the trash is handled properly and related to business. Our especially, Tucasa Restaurant, we will specialize in serving dishes with the highest quality prepared and supervised by the executive chef and owner, which is my mother, Lotus. And we've more than twenty, she has more than twenty years' experience in restaurant business in the cities of New York and, and in Massachusetts. We specialize in top tier creative dishes, including different food preparations in different shapes and appealing the, with the food decoration. We specialize in preparing upscale cocktail, signature drink that include color changes effects, especially no hearts of lighting decorative fruits. In our menu will be available in English and Spanish. This is our menu. This one is in Spanish. But here we can see the salad. We have different type of salad, different type of meat, fish, seafood, poultry. We have like over juice, mofongo, which is a typical Spanish dish. Pasta, a combination plates with pasta and seafood and different type of meals. Meat, steaks in steaks in, and lobster. And we can translate the, the menu to we, in our menu, we have both languages, English and Spanish. This only has Spanish, but we have both. Also, we have a menu for, for catering with hot dishes and we have natural juices in different type of chairs. So the coffee, water, soft drinks and desserts, homemade desserts in, in our bakery and, and dessert station. These are some pictures of our creations. These are salad, seafood, the lobster, fried fish. This is our, our most famous dishes. There's garlic shrimp, that's a seafood salad, mofongos de camarones, that shrimp made with smashed plantains and salad. And the, the one that is to, to your left does steak thing lobster is called mar en tierra, sea sea lion. Those are turkey and in, in enchilados, camarones enchilados. These are our desserts and creations of my mother's cakes. We prepare cakes for weddings, for, for caterings and for birthdays. In fruit salad, different type of, of salad for buffet and different desserts. This is my mother's contact number. Her cell phone is two one seven four four seven one, one six eight two. That's her contact number and so we have the, the restaurant line. This is in our presentation. Thank you for, for hearing us.
Okay.
Do you have any question? We'll be able to, to answer now.
Do you have a floor plan?
Yes, we do.
Can you share it with us?
Um, yeah, sure. I have, I have another presentation. Hold on, just give me one second.
Take your time.
Hold on, I'm looking for it. I have, I have the full plan. Do you see it?
No, we still have your presentation up.
Okay, just. Okay, you can see it now?
No. I think you have to unshare this one and then post the other one.
Oh. Let me see.
Yes.
Sorry, I don't know how to, to check this one.
Okay.
We can see it.
We see the?
If you want, the, the measure for the floor plan, the area, area is twenty-three hundred square feet. Where?
Okay, so why don't you walk us through the floor plan so we understand?
Okay, just give me one second. Let me see, how can I do? I'm gonna click. Can you see it now?
Yes, we see your floor plan.
Okay, um, so here, this is the, the bar area. We're applying to build the, this bar. It, it still has, hasn't been built. And this is the restaurant area. Here we have the chafing dishes. We have a big kitchen. All this area is storage and kitchen. And this area is the serving area. This is for the restaurant. We're planning to have the dessert station in the, in the bakery area. Here we have the steam dishes for takeout and to eat. And over here we have tables to, to eat for our customer to, to eat. Here we have, in this corner, we have the salad and, and here the desserts. We have two entries and two exits. This is a this is connected to this area and, and this is connected to here. You can walk through this door and get to the dessert area as well as here. We have two exits in the back here in this area. Here, that takes you good to the, to the outside, to the, to the backyard. And you can connect here to the parking, this, in all this area. Here we have another exit here through the kitchen. And here we have a candy, a handicap restroom. And over here we have a ladies restroom and the gentlemen's restroom. This is the, where the main kitchen is. This is here, the stuff and the fryer machines are located here. Here there's a sink and here we have an employee restroom. Here, this is a storage for, for dishes and pots. Here, here we have the dishwasher, dishwasher area. And here we have another dishwasher area as well. Here we have a small sink for the bar and dishwasher area for, just for the glasses that are going to be used in the bar. Over here we have a storage for food. And, and this is, we have dishes here in this area and pots. Here this is the, the office.
So is the only area with tables by the bar? I mean, this is a big piece of property and I'm still not sure about the tables and the booths or whatever you're gonna have.
We, we have booths in this area. Here, we have this, just two tables or, or three here because this is working for a customer to come here to, to buy, take out, we have this space. So mostly the people who are staying to dine in, they're going to use this area. This is for takeout area. And, and we can serve à la carte in this, in this area. And people who cannot get a seat, probably they will, will wait on the bar. I mean, the table are available to sit. Right now we have plenty of seats. We have capacity for eighty people, but because of the pandemic, we're planning to have less, less of table. We have to have the proper space that is required by the, by the state of Massachusetts because of the COVID restriction that, that are still.
Now, how many people will you be expecting to see?
Fifty. And before we have more, before the pandemic came, my mother went into this business in two thousand nineteen when she got the list, but because of the pandemic, we couldn't not open and start the whole process. She was planning to start for, for March to two thousand twenty and all the pandemic came and we have to stop.
Is your first restaurant?
No. She has, has a restaurant in New York. The name was Don Juan Restaurant and another in Lynn. The name was Tropical Restaurant.
Can we know, can we get more about her background and her experience for running a restaurant? And how many is she handled in that type of thing?
Yeah, ella quiere saber más. I'm sorry, I'm going to translate to her. Ellos quieren saber más de tu background, de tu experiencias restaurant. Okay. Dile que yo trabajé por once año en el Don Juan Restaurant en Girona, Skinnamont Eden. She worked for more than twenty years in the, in Don Juan Restaurant. It was located in the one seventy-four Girona, Mont Eden, in the Bronx, New York. Después trabajé.
She worked there. She did own it, right, or manage it?
She was, she was the spouse of the owner. But she was the, the chef's executive. She was the one who cooks. And, and she also was doing the manager. Yo cubría el, el horario de libre de la cocinera de la mañana y del chef de la noche. Sometimes she covers the, the night shift for the chef at night and during the day for the, for the main dishes for the steam. She covers, she cook in the morning shift. Y luego después trabajé en downtown frente a Federal Plaza en un restaurante llamado Scooby. Trabajé durante. She worked for six months in a restaurant named Scooby that was located in front of the Federal. Plaza in Brooklyn, New York as well. She left that restaurant because her husband bought the the another restaurant.
And this business lasted for like a year and a half.
She was uh, the chef there for one year and a half.
When was this?
In in Manhattan, New York.
No, no, I'm, when, a year ago? No, I'm sorry.
Uh, that that was in in two thousand oh nine. She she left the restaurant because uh, her husband got sick and he he died and she she closed the business. Later on, she moved to Lynn and she was there in a tropical restaurant for six years. It was in Lynn way. And she have another one in Santo Domingo for three years.
Where is she right now?
Uh, we we live here in Long Meadow. We live here in Long Meadow. She uh, she she was in in Lynn before here. She was in there uh, from two thousand eight. Fifteen to to nineteen. And then she closed that because she she saw the opportunity to to bring the business here to and moved to Long, she moved to Long Meadow and the restaurant is located in Forest Park, so it's very close by. And for sixteen uh, years ago, she also was with her sister, my uh, my aunt and they opened a restaurant that the name is Olympic Restaurant. Located in Chestnut Street in Springfield. It's Spanish food. So she saw the opportunity that the clients here, they they so many Spanish people and they like the Spanish food and they decided to to go here and open a restaurant here. Then the pandemic came and they couldn't open on two thousand twenty.
Thank you.
Question Gloria.
Go ahead.
Did you, did you get a chance to meet with the Forest Park Civic Association? I'm curious to what they had to say about a two o'clock closing.
Yes, we did. Uh, we are still, we did the same presentation as I told you. We present the same schedule that is a, it is in the presentation on three one AM. But if you allow us to close later, uh, we're planning to do that. Um, I I don't know, we we met with them uh, several days ago, like a couple of weeks. I know someone, um, some, uh, the mother of Peter. He has, uh, he she has passed away unfortunately and 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 they have delayed it to send you the the letter to you. But I, but I think their letter is the approval. Probably you'll get it by tomorrow because he was a broker of.
I was just curious if Peter was still on the call here.
I'm here.
Peter, quick question. There is also a restaurant sort of on a diagonal across the street there. I think it's like a Chinese food maybe. It's been there for years. Do they have a liquor, do they have a license there, Peter?
Are you talking about the the one on the corner of White and Sumner?
Yeah, the Wong Walk he's referring to.
Wong Walk, yeah, they have alcohol.
And and what time, Peter, are they open until?
Oh. I don't, I'm, I can't, I can't tell you. I don't, I don't think it's two. But I'd have to check on that.
Thank you.
How would they, how would you feel about midnight? Because that was the recommendation of the planning office? Since it's a restaurant and not, not a bar primarily.
No, because I don't think I'm going to open from Monday to Friday. Everything depends on how the community responds. But really, at the beginning, I think I'm going to close from Monday to Friday.
Okay, she's plan, uh, she says, uh, we're now willing to open in that schedule the whole week. She's all just playing for weekends. We have to recover because of of the situation we have had for over a year. And that's according to how the business responds and the and the client's response. She's planning to to have the schedule, late schedule from Thursday to to Saturday. Not the whole week.
And how long will you be serving food?
From from how, that's how long you're serving food. She have the same time, more than twenty years.
No, no.
You mean in the restaurant schedule?
Yes, let's say I come in at one thirty in the in the morning. You're oh, potentially open to two. What would I be able to get if I wanted food and a drink?
The kitchen closes at half past three.
Uh, she will have the menu available until the closing time. But uh, if you come in at it'll uh, one thirty, probably the kitchen will be closed. Because we we have to clean up for one hour before the closing, the kitchen will be closed.
Okay.
Could I just ask, just stop screen sharing if you're all set with the plan, just so we can.
I'm sorry, yes.
So it sounds like the kitchen is open till midnight.
Yes, it's going to be open till midnight.
And can I ask, who who did the floor plan? Did you have an architect help you with the floor plan?
Uh, my, my, who did the plan? Uh, it was a friend of hers. He's engineer, but he's from Santo Domingo. He's not engineering here. He just measured the 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 stretcher.
Okay, and so if it's nine o'clock in the morning and I want to come in, will you have bakery items available to purchase?
Yes, we'll have uh, article of the bakery available at nine in the morning.
Si, si.
Yes, because we're open for breakfast as well. It's going to be open from morning to.
You're gonna be.
So there's a breakfast menu as well?
Yes, we have.
It's on the menu that she showed us. Breakfast was on there.
This is hours of operation. It says ten AM too.
The courses on the menu is not identical because we don't have à la carte breakfast. It's just like uh, buffet style. You go to the steam and what we got the menu for that day is what you get. So we don't have. Um, she's very popular where she have worked before because she have a very big variety of dishes in the steam.
So what time would you actually open in the morning?
For the public, from eight and a half in the morning.
Uh.
The application says ten AM.
Uh, she said that it was a mistake when we were eating the the schedule. She's gonna sell breakfast um, from eleven, um, eight thirty to to eleven AM. Be able. Frantin, we have a.
The front page also shows that Monday through Sunday from ten to two, so those hours aren't right at all. Correct. The application for the liquor license needs to be no, the application needs to have some changes to it.
She apologized because was, that was her mistake. She was the one who who filled out the application.
Okay. So, but we have it straight from Monday through Sunday. You will open at eight thirty to eleven AM to serve breakfast.
Yes.
From eight and a half in the morning to eleven in the morning because at that time it starts to eat breakfast.
Yes, she says is the schedule for breakfast will be uh, from eight thirty to eleven PM because uh, she's already interested for two people who works. So if they want to take up some breakfast before going to work, they can be able to have it. And after eleven, she's gonna put uh, their their lunch in there in there.
Okay, and then from there you want to be open until two PM?
Yes.
Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
Yes.
And twelve AM.
Two AM, correct, two AM.
Oh, two AM, sorry.
On Thursdays, Fridays and Saturdays, is that what they're asking?
Yes.
Okay.
What about the rest of the?
Excuse me?
What about Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday and Sunday?
Time? The days of the week? Really, it could be at eleven, from ten to eleven.
Uh, that depends on on the clients that we have, probably between ten to uh, to eleven. We're opening, we don't know if we're going to be very busy, but not later.
Because in reality, it depends on the situation that you have with the public. Because if I have people ordering food, I'm going to have delivery. You know, for decades. Until the time that I allow.
Uh, she said depends on the response of the clients because uh, she's gonna have the menu available for delivering and takeout. And so, uh, if we're very busy, probably it's just going to be until eleven. If no, probably she will close uh, closer. If you allow us to to close at that time, or why you approve? Because as we are new in the in 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 the area, that depends on the sentence and how busy we are.
Si.
And we, what are gonna be, what is, let's see if I get my words together here. What hours will your mother be there?
At what time would she be there?
At what time?
At what time would she be there?
I would be there in the morning, from the time I open until five in the afternoon. Or more or less, from the time I open, I can be there until three in the afternoon. Then I leave and go back to six in the afternoon to continue with the meal.
Okay, she'll, she's planning to be there from opening to three PM and then have a have a break and come back from from seats uh, to to supervise the the nice schedule.
Normally, I'm the most active I can possibly when I'm in a business.
When she owns a restaurant, she always trying to get there uh, as as far as possible, the the longest as possible in the in the business, especially in the beginning.
I like to be at the front always.
She always ha- likes to be in the front of the business, supervising everything.
I just, I just want to say, um, I appreciated the the presentation. I thought it was really well detailed and um, it seems like you have a a lot of experience um, in the culinary field. And uh, no objections to the schedule as proposed. I understand, obviously, the weekdays are kind of tentative because you don't know how much attraction it's going to have at the beginning. But I'm definitely looking forward to checking it out once you're open.
Thank you.
I've been driving by the sign for two years now, so I'm excited that something's actually gonna get in there. So it it's definitely needed in that space. It's been vacant for too long and it's and uh, your menu looks great. It made me hungry, the pictures. I I think that you you probably need to redo the application though and and send it to fill with the correct hours of operation.
Um, yeah, I'm still not clear on what the hours are.
Well, in the presentation, they said that the weekdays would be to eleven and then Thursday, Friday and Saturday would be till they had one AM. So, but on the application, it has different times. So I think it needs to be adjusted on the application and then we can go from there. And Peter, they cannot, they can't serve alcohol after one thirty either, right? So uh, if you have, if even if you had a two o'clock closing, you have to stop serving by one thirty, correct?
Before I got bumped off, I was gonna clarify that. If the two, if their closing time is two, then you know, last call will be one thirty and food, uh, even uh, some food, not maybe not the full menu, but a limited menu has to be served up till close uh, last call. So they have to offer something.
Okay, I understand. They say that the regulations say that the last drink is served at one thirty. If you allow me to open until two, and the food too. And what?
Okay, do any of the other, uh, any board member have any other questions? I think I just want to see an updated application. I I still feel it's a little bit all over the place. I'm just not a hundred percent sure about everything. I mean, even, it sounds like a lot of experience, but I still felt that that was sort of, I wasn't really clear on whether she's actually run a full restaurant, that type of thing.
Yeah, at least.
So if it was possible to get a little more information on that, you know, just outlined.
Okay.
I'm not sure I understand you, Rosemary. Um, I just, like a resume of her experience? That type of thing, to get a better idea of what the experience is then.
I think she already explained that she's been in the restaurant business for over twenty years and has and helped her hu- ex-husband or her husband who passed away operate to multiple restaurants.
I agree.
I don't think we usually ask people for a resume, do we?
Well, no, we usually do go into their history a little bit.
I think they explain, I think they explained it. I think there might be a little bit of language barrier, but I I'm satisfied of what.
Okay, well, that's that's good.
She said to apologize because she does things, she understands, but she cannot speak fluent.
There's no apology necessary.
No, that's fine.
Thank you.
All right.
But I do think you need to redo the application um, so that the hours are clear and present that to Phil. And then unfortunately, somebody from the Forest Parks Civic Association lost somebody. So hopefully by our next meeting, we'll have their recommendation too.
And as far as the hours, Peter, before they get to you, they have to have the set hours before you agree to it, right? And whatever, whatever you approve, that's that's what they have to live by.
Correct, yeah. The Forest Park Civic Association contacted me and they wanted to see the application. And I said, you know, I can't, I can't give you the whole application because that has, you know, social security numbers and things like that, Corey application. So do you have specific questions? And then they, they just said they wanted to make sure that the application matched the presentation or something like that. And I said, well, if you have specific questions, I can answer uh, or find out the answer to the specific questions. And they never got back to me. So uh, it's difficult to get ahold of Victor Dabla because his phone is always full. And um, I was talking with Jane Hetzel, who's a board member, and I haven't reconnected with her. So I can try to do that tomorrow and say, you know, do you, are are you satisfied? Do you need any more information or?
Yeah, I do think Council Davia's mother had passed, so I think he would have been in Puerto Rico, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
If there are no other questions, I will accept a motion to continue the hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing.
Second.
Okay, voting to continue this item until the February second hearing, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Anjelli absent, Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
And Ms. Joy?
Yes.
So this will be continued until the February second hearing. I'll send you out another link to get back onto the Zoom meeting. So I'll send you that when we get closer to the date.
Okay, and then before then you will redo the application, correct?
Yeah, you can, you can email that to me if it's easier or however you want to do it. You can send it to the License Commission too.
Okay, if you want, we can, we can share the presentation with you and we can make the arrangement as well in the presentation with the schedule.
Okay.
No, you don't need to do the presentation again when we come back.
Right.
Okay, thank you though. But, okay, all right, so.
All right, so that's, we have no subdivision plans. And just, just for everyone knows, the update on the court square renewal plan is actually gonna be pushed off until I put that on the agenda incorrectly. It was supposed, they wanted to come on February second instead of the nineteenth. So I'll just put that under the next agenda. It doesn't really need a vote. It's just gonna be an update on the, the plans for kind of the downtown urban renewal area, so.
Okay.
On that note, I don't have any other items, so.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.